Night, you just need to keep the tab of everybody who's here. So we appreciate everybody signing in. Uh, ready Tabby?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call the special Dover Select Board meeting to order at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to have a conversation about short-term rentals. So the plan this evening will be Sarah Shippey, we're going to introduce ourselves first, Sarah Shippey, Vice Chair. Vicky Capitani, Chair.
Joe Mahan. Select Board.
And Eric DeRosa is our Economic Development Director. Sarah, I've asked Sarah to moderate the meeting in terms of calling on specific people. Please stand up and say your name. Um, and I will be looking for the people on Zoom. Sarah is the has done a lot of moderating, and so with this amount of people, I thought that was appropriate. So having said that, um, Eric, will you go over the ground rules of the discussion?
Yeah, so basic public meeting rules apply. You know, wait till you're addressed by the moderator or the chair before you speak. No crosstalk, no responding directly to someone regarding a comment or question unless you've been called on. We've asked during the public comments section to try to keep your comments under two minutes. There's a lot of people here and a lot of things to say tonight. Uh, so we just want to make sure that we get as many comments and questions in as possible. If a question is asked during that period, I will do my best to answer it briefly to give more time for people to speak, but I do feel it's important to answer those questions. As Vicky said, when you would like to speak, the closer you can get to that mic, the better, just so everybody on Zoom can hear you and our recording can hear you. Watch your step. There are some cables, but if you can come up, please state your name and then present your comment or question.
Just saying, if there's a question, I will repeat it back to make sure I heard it right, and then that way I will be sure it got picked up as well. So Eric is going to start with a presentation of the Bytown Housing Subcommittee on Short-Term Rentals.
It's not so much a presentation as a recap.
A recap, okay.
Give that now. So for anyone not familiar, the town of Dover works with the town of Wilmington, what's called the Bytown Economic Development Committee. We cover things that affect both of our towns, whether it's marketing, housing, you know, other issues that we face. There are two subcommittees of Bytown Economic Development. We have a marketing committee and a housing committee. In the housing committee, about a year and a half ago, we started a conversation regarding the regulation of short-term rentals. There's a common misconception, and I'm going to get this out here now that this conversation was started because we are anti-short-term rental. And I can absolutely assure you that we are not. This conversation began in order to set some basic ground rules to make sure that STRs can continue to run and to not be hindered as to how they're able to do that. Okay. We look all around the state, we look all around the country, we're seeing plenty of municipalities who get to the point where they throw up their hands and say, you know what, no more. We don't want that to happen in Dover. So the idea was to come up with a list of rules and regulations that can be followed to help address the most, the biggest issues that we face here in Dover. To make sure that we don't get to that one, okay? So from the housing committee, a subcommittee was created to talk about rentals and not just short-term rentals, long-term rentals as well. Uh, we met for the latter part of six months, uh, and after, about a month after that, we presented the full committee report to both select boards at a meeting on July 31st uh, down at the old school in Wilmington. So I didn't print the entire report for everybody because it's a little lengthy, um, but what I did print for everybody was the list of short-term rental recommendations that came out of that meeting. If you go to our website, you can see the full report, you can see the recommendations that were made for the long-term rentals, you can also see what work we put in to get to the point where we came to these decisions, okay? Uh, very briefly, I will go through the recommendations that were made on behalf of the subcommittee to the select boards regarding short-term rentals. Recommendation one was to make recommendations on rules and regulations to the towns regarding short-term rentals. Were we going to make recommendations or not? That was the vote, and the vote was yes, we're going to make some recommendations to the select. Recommendation two, the town should consider exploring options of implementing a registration system for short-term rentals. This literally, this piece of it was, was basically to have a place to collect all of the information included in the recommendations below. Okay, now, the question is going to come out tonight, will there be a fee? Most likely, we're not talking thousands of dollars, okay? We're, we're litter, and I don't have exact numbers because if we decide to move forward with something like this, we're going to, we're going to be speaking to a number of different companies, finding the best fit and making sure, we're, we're not here to get in your pocket. We're just here to make sure that we can have this basic set of rules and that we have a way to manage them through this regulation. Okay? Recommendation three, all short-term rentals shall complete the required fire compliance checklist from the state of Vermont Fire Safety Department and file with the town in which the rental resides. This is already a requirement in the state of Vermont for the Vermont Department of Fire Safety. Okay, you are, you are supposed to self-certify as a short-term rental owner or any rental owner that you have all of the boxes checked on this certification. You have your smokes and carbons, you have smoke detectors. You're not claiming that a room in your basement houses 20 people with no ingress. Okay, it's simple, it's a self-certification. There's, there's other steps to it as well, but it's something that's already in place in the state of Vermont. So we're just saying, you're going to do it and you're going to submit it to us as part of this registration, okay? And keep in mind, these are all recommendations, these are the things we will be discussing. None of this is in place. I had people calling me today asking me, how do I get all this stuff in? None of this is in place yet. We're, we're here to talk about it, okay? Recommendation four, an emergency contact list shall be posted in the entrance or in a prominent location inside each rental unit with emergency contacts for the property and local emergency services. It's pretty self-explanatory. Recommendation five, a point of contact for all short-term rentals must be on the file with the towns for each property being used as a short-term rental. We're in a situation where if you look at our grand list, there's a number of the properties, many of them being used as short-term rentals at some point during the year that are owned by a trust or an LLC. They don't have a direct contact on the grand list for someone who owns that property, and if there's an issue at the property, we don't necessarily always know who to contact. So that's, that's just to cover that base. Recommendation six, a point of contact or authorized representative must be able to respond to an issue on the rental property within one hour 24/7 while the rental was in use. There was a lot of talk about this one. It's not necessarily that you need to be on property within an hour, but you need to be able to respond to a problem on the property within an hour. And if you can't, there needs to be someone managing that property for you who can respond to that problem within one hour. Okay? Recommendation seven, airproof trash and recycling storage is required by any property being used as a short-term rental. Okay? So as you can see, we have not made any changes to, or attempted to make any changes to the way that you can use your property, how often you can rent it, and what you can charge for it, where it is, any of those things. Okay? Every recommendation that we made was made with safety, responsibility, and respect in mind. Okay, realistically, anyone who's already responsibly running a short-term rental shouldn't have any issue with anything that we've put forward here. Okay, it's about safety and respect and providing the right to peace and enjoyment to the people who aren't renting their property. Okay?
Okay. Okay, so when I call on you, even if you know I know you, I still would like you to say your name out loud and preferably stand so we can hear you well.
Steve Montello, so I have two questions. Did the committee discuss minimum lengths of stays as some other municipalities are doing across the country? Minimum of a week or minimum of 30 months, minimum of six months, did the committee discuss that at all?
We did, and we went with the, the state standard, which was anything less than 30 days.
Okay, my second question is if there's a disturbance that occurs in the middle of the night and you call, I guess, the police department, how does it currently happen? Or get handled, and how would it get handled under the committee's recommendations?
So per the committee's recommendations, it, it wouldn't necessarily create like a special task force to come out separate from the police, right? The police are still going to respond to issues on the property when it comes to, you know, noise, parking, all of the things that the police would be called to a property.
Response now to the morning.
The police.
State, local?
Are local.
Because I know I've called a number of times and it's hard to get something to come out at 2:00 in the morning. So how would it happen going forward? Enough Randy's here?
No.
Mike, I believe Mike is here.
Mike, would you like to answer? Our, our incoming Police Chief, Mike Arbogat, here.
So that would be noise disturbances, parties.
So one of the things that's covered in the short-term rental registration companies that we've spoken to is also provides the ability, the ability for a neighbor or, or anyone else in the neighborhood to file a complaint at a property, should something like that be happening. You know, obviously, there would be a lot to suss out, but it would be, you know, almost like a three, we had envisioned almost a three-strikes policy, you know, a verbal warning, a written warning, and on the, on the third offense, you know, the removal of your property from those rental services for six months or a year, or whatever it is that we decide. Basically, to try to curb some of the bad behavior that we've seen come out of those Airbnbs. Now, that being said, you can't just call because you hate your neighbor Fred and file a complaint, right? You need to have proof of.
Or they didn't invite us to the park.
Right.
No crosstalk.
So you need to have proof of said infraction, right? So if you're sitting in your house and something is so loud that it's disturbing your peace, you should be able to get a video of that, right? If you're sitting in your home and you get parked in because there's cars parked up all the way down the street, or they're parked in the road, you should be able to get a photo of that and provide that as proof of the infraction. So obviously, there's some details to work out there, but that's, that's the idea, is that these programs would also allow us a mechanism for other property owners to say, hey, here's, here's some of the issues. Thank you.
State attorney?
Yeah, hi, everybody, Erica Reynolds. Um, thank you so much for, uh, letting us a chance to comment on this issue. I wrote it all down because otherwise I'm too nervous to talk. I can say, but I can't do this. So I'm a Ramon there, born and raised in the area, and I chose to stay here and make a living like so many of our young people, which leave um, after graduation, widely known, and that's an issue in Vermont. I have a unique perspective on the issue at hand. As I worked in affordable housing for a long time, and I'm a full-time realtor in the area. Um, my husband and I are currently setting up two, um, properties that we own in the area as vacation rentals. Even though an active real estate agent, the cost of living here is so high, um, that we've turned to this additional income stream to try to live comfortably here. It's not an easy task to make a living in Vermont, and I recognize that. And livinging, our ability to do so with an outright ban, not that you guys are doing that, just getting this out there. You know, or other heavy restrictions, it would really further exacerbate this difficult task of being decent living in Vermont. There are many here and others that are taught to work in the valley and rely on vacation rentals to make their living. Cleaning companies, restaurants, retailers, builders, et cetera, list goes on, and many are here to comment on how that, any kind of like strict restrictions would affect their livelihood. So putting on the realtor hat, um, short-term rentals bring economic benefits to the town, drive in tourism, increase in property demand. This leads to higher property values and tax revenues, of course, for the town. In addition, the host always recommends local restaurants and activities. Um, property owners also invest in and maintain their homes, especially some of the older, more dilapidated homes. Short-term rentals, they also offer like flexibility for homeowners and, you know, they can earn income when they're not using their property to put back into the home. And it also turns and creates local job opportunities. Uh, short-term rentals attract diverse tourists. They also enhance the overall charm and atmosphere of the town, which speaks because they're coming back, hopefully they want to maybe move here full-time. But based on my experience in affordable housing and as a realtor, the lack of affordable housing is not directly related to short-term rentals. The housing stock used for vacation homes is not the affordable housing that we're looking for, for those seeking long-term housing. Um, and affordable housing is best addressed at the town and state level, working with organizations like the one that runs our housing trust. Um, it's actually the collective impact of the buyers and renters' income power that drives change in housing prices. Thank you for letting us.
Thank you. Sure.
So to, to respond, the conversation has never been about a full ban or even restrictions, it's, it's and, and I, sitting in the Economic Development Office, see the benefits of having these rentals and know that, no, it's not because of these rentals that we don't have all of the housing stock that we could have. There's nothing saying that if it wasn't a short-term rental, it's a long-term rental, right? That being said, I'll just reiterate, that's why this conversation was started. We understand the economic impact that these, how, like, that these homes have for people to come and visit with us, which is why we want them to be able to continue to operate. We just wanted to set some basic ground rules before things got out of hand and we ended up in a situation where we were talking about a full ban or restriction.
Uh, there's somebody on Zoom, Curtis? Is it Spock Avento?
Yes, it is. Actually, it's Suzanne.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are you, how are you all of you?
Great.
Um, so we live in a development here in West Dover where we have several rental units, um, unsafe, in my opinion. We have never had an issue, well, I shouldn't say never. The short-term rentals that we've experienced over the past year and a half, we've been here for 15 years. Uh, several units that we've had in the past several year, uh, couple of year or two. There are, it's a three-bedroom, it's advertised on Airbnb or Verbo, uh, for a maximum of 16 people. Um, allowing pets. To date, we haven't had an issue with the couple that are near us. Uh, very nice people that have showed up, but there are 12 people in a three-bedroom unit. There's no basement in this particular unit. They, people were very nice, they were very kind and very respectful. However, um, I do think it's an issue with capacity and it, it taxes everyone's sewer, water, driveways. You know, all of that is, is a factor in it, and I don't, I don't feel like it, it's something that should be banned. I think it's something that should be controlled. I think for the most part, people are decent and people are good. However, I do feel that there should be a limit as to the number of bedrooms and the number of occupants. A huge fire hazard when you have 16 people in a three-bedroom house. Uh, so, you know, has the board considered anything by bedroom or, you know, something to control, you know, the, the number of mattresses in, in the living room and then the three bedrooms, you know, like, what's going on with respect to that?
Uh, occupancy is something that's actually already outlined in that Department of Fire Safety checklist, right? You, you are supposed to self-certify how many rooms and sleeping spaces you have based on actual fact. If that document is misrepresented, then that gives us an opportunity, God forbid something should happen, but to, to, to have a leg to stand on to say you had too many people in this based on what you certified as was allowable in your property. Um, I think the policing of how many people end up in an Airbnb is not an easy thing to tackle, even if we had someone who was ready to do that full-time. You know, there, there's nothing saying that, you know, somebody comes to do an inspection and there's an office, and when they leave, it's a bedroom all of a sudden.
Right.
So I think policing that aspect of it from a town level is, is really hard. What we're hoping is for that self-certification through the Department of Fire Safety, that people are honest and realistic about the capacity of their home.
Is that managed by anyone in a sense where when you register, is there a way to say that you're, you're limited to the number of people? I mean, at one point, this particular residence with three bedrooms, I know for a fact there were 16 people because we counted them outside, and at one point in the winter, there were 21 cars in the driveway. You know, it's, I, I don't want to restrict anybody from doing what they want to do, it's a safety issue. There's a fire in that house next to me, it is going to go to my house, and there's nobody that's going to put that fire out.
Understood, and I, this is also something that we've discussed with, with the registration companies that we've spoken with, where when they're doing these reviews and making sure that people are registered, if they see, you know, a one-bedroom apartment as holding 15 people, then they're going to reach out to that property owner and say, hey, this isn't, you, you're, you're not being truthful about the occupancy of your property. Okay, so while I don't, like I said, I don't know that it's something we would be able to police, I think this set of recommendations and, and really forcing people to go through what's in the Department of Fire Safety should help to squash some of these issues.
Before I let you, is there anybody, Steve wants another bite at the apple, so I'm going to let other people talk. Stand up, please, and say your name.
Hi, Mike Kirkland. Yeah, I agree with you, uh, with having the current rules, maybe on a town.
I'm sorry, Mike, excuse me, could you move closer to the mic so we can catch you?
Maybe on like a, a, the town website, you have a page where you have your principal link, your short-term rental safety, health, financial obligations, or your name and number on the Department of Health. If the Department of Health gets a phone call, uh, from a guest or whatever, then you're regulated, you got to get a lodging license. It's $130 a year, you got to hear, uh, well-tested annually. And, um, but that's kind of your team, with your, um, with having this posted. And so you don't really need additional costs. Um, because you have the state to look up, uh, whether or not you're following the rules, and they have their inspectors come to your house and make sure that you're following the proper window ingress for a bedroom, whatever, and capacity numbers. So that's kind of the way it goes. But if you had the links on the webpage on the town website where people could download all the information, and we'll probably go a long way to help them follow the rules.
Thanks.
Hi, this is Regina Ferrato, and in response to Suzanne's issue, it happens quite often, I think, in this area. I would suggest investing in some cameras, some live footage, so that, that owner knows what's happening on their own property. They have no clue, they're not here. Nine times out of 10, they're in another state. And they don't know that 21 people are in their home. And probably wouldn't approve of it if they did. They, you know, it's, it's a gray area, I agree, Sarah. But i- if, if they're really concerned and it is a safety issue, I think a camera is, you know, and I've had people do that before, and they called them and said, you know, you're, you're banned, you're not getting back. And, and here's the rest of the bill for the extra people. It's a thought.
So two responses to that. Uh, I would say, um, I think that the ability for a neighbor or a buddy property owner in the general area to file a complaint, should something like that be happening, will also help to regulate that type of issue. Um, and then also as part, you know, it's not part of the rental recommendations, but it's part of being, I think, a short-term rental owner is to take that extra step to install, you know, at least external blink cameras, so you can see how many people are entering the home. I don't know that I've ever stayed in a short-term rental that didn't have external cameras to be monitoring that. You can even take it a step further and have decibel level readers in your home to ensure that the noise levels both inside and outside are not going over what they should be, you know, depending on the time of day. So I think there are, like, we didn't want to have to, we hoped in putting these together that we could come up with a basic set of rules and, and at least start to get some teeth behind if a call is made to the police station, if a property is a constant problem to a neighbor or a neighborhood. But that being said, there are, there are so many things as short-term rental owners that you can be doing to be responsible and respectable to the people that you live around, um, that we could really avoid a lot of these problems.
I have, uh, Celine?
Same person again.
Same person.
Same person.
Oh, no.
Hi, this is Celine.
Celine Parbel?
Yeah. Yeah, hi. Hi, everyone, Celine Parbel, I'm, uh, I own, uh, two, uh, houses in, in Dover. Uh, what I wanted to mention is, uh, what we do is, um, every time when we have, um, a reservation come in, we have our renters sign the rental agreement at the reservation time. And we have a bunch of, uh, rules and, uh, we set expectations about what we expect renters uh, to do, not do, how many people are going to be there, what, you know, no parties, no whatever, and we are very clear that we need this rental agreement to be signed and sent back to us, and this is something that, um, really, I don't know if legally that has any stand, you know, to have that done, but it really sets, sets a tone with our renters to what we expect uh, from them to, you know, uh, how we want them to basically act in our home and outside the home. So I would, I would really encourage everyone to do that, and I would encourage the town to also maybe provide some recommendations as to what kind of rental agreements, what kind of things that we could, you know, uh, help the community also be more proactive about that kind of stuff. Cameras are great, we have cameras, they are really great, and we also have make sure that our renters are clear that we have cameras. And, um, and I promise you guys, once you have to sign something, you're, you're clear that, you know, someone's going to be on to you if you don't respect the rules, so it's working great for us, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Celine. Richard, I see you, but I had a hand in here, so I'm going to go there first.
I guess, I'm here again, Angel, Alicia, we purchased two years ago, and, um, we do spend like six months up there, but we do rent for six months, and I would have never purchased if, because I heard that there was a possibility of not having short-term rental, but I understand now from you that that's an option. I love that the rules are there. If that ever comes to a point where short-term rentals are going to be banned, uh, I would like at least the people who have purchased, under the assumption that short-term rentals were going to be available to them, that they would be grandfathered in. Um, so I just would like, if that ever does come up, and that would be because I would have never rented, I would have never purchased up here if I knew that I had to rent for a long-term rental. Um, we do have the ring, we do have other people who are enjoying it very much here, but I just want to, that would have totally changed the game, and I would have never purchased. Okay?
So I think, you know, that, I will reiterate, that the, the point of a ban has never even left our mouth. The, the issue that we're running into right now, and I think probably the reason there's so many of you here tonight, is that there's a lot of misinformation around what's been talked about and what's going on. You know, there was an assumption that we would just be following in line with what Wilmington was doing, and while we do work with them quite often, we are a long separate town, so.
Are we willing to do that?
They're, they're working on their own. I have no official comments on anything that they're doing at the moment. But for the town of Dover, it was, it was to take these recommendations, uh, to present them to the select board and to have an open and public discussion about them, so that we can get some of these things out in the air. Um, we, we've done, I feel our best to be open and transparent about these conversations and when we're going to be having them. If anyone has any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. But I think these are the, these are the types of things that are going to help to solve some of those problems, so that we don't ever get to the point where we talk about a ban, any of, like, we don't want that, I don't want that, from an economic development standpoint. I, heads and beds is, is what makes the valley, right? And, and without all the beds, we, we can't have the people, so.
Okay, excuse me, sir, we're not, you can't speak and you can be called on. But, no, no, sir, no, you can't speak unless you're called on.
So no ban has ever been discussed.
Okay, um, Richard Sedlock, had his hand up on, on Zoom?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for choosing me to speak, and thank you to everyone who's attending tonight. I've been following this, um, Eric, you've done quite a bit of work. I'm a resident of Dover for 16 years full-time. Currently, I have five short-term rentals abutting my land, all residential zoned. I live about 300 feet off a main road. Uh, I'm sorry, 300 feet off a dirt road, uh, about a half mile from Route 100. The short-term rental business. The short term rental businesses have attracted a vacation behavior. That is not acceptable to families. They are entitled to the personal use and enjoyment of their property. This is proven by me personally with over twelve police reports since two thousand eighteen. Twenty-one confrontations with trespassers on my land during COVID. Two cars left stranded for over three days on my property. And one DWI issued last winter in front of my bedroom window on my property, three hundred feet off the road. Late at night, followed by a toll call. Since COVID, it's no longer a weekend issue. It's no longer a winter issue. It's a year round issue. I have over seven thousand dollars in legal fees. With issues with these properties, I've spent over two thousand dollars worth of cameras that will not only record video, but sound. Because noise complaints are very hard to prove. When the police show up, the noise may have stopped. And it's. Falls on me, the homeowner, for being a pain in the arse with the local police department. The people that come, you have a conversation with them. Things may get better. But then that's over on Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, and then you have another group come in. It's a revolving door of ruckus. And to date, there is no way to control it. There's no possibility for knowing you have people coming up at one of the houses next door to you that weekend. You had plans to maybe do something with your friends and family on your property, or you planned on going away. And now you see nine or ten cars at one of these houses, and you don't feel safe leaving your home. I shouldn't have to police my own property when I live in a town of twelve hundred people. I lived in New York for twenty-one years, I didn't have this many problems. In my humble opinion, this type of business does not belong in a residential area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Richard. Um, Steve?
I just, I wanna circle back on the occupancy issue, because we had an occupancy issue at one of our condominium associations. Where we had twenty people in a condominium, so I brought out Brian Johnson when he was still the fire marshal here. And I understand that the occupancy is not per bedroom as it is two hundred square feet per person in your unit. Right, so if you have two thousand square feet, you should only be able to have ten people. So when I had an issue with a particular owner at one of our associations, Brian came out, we measured the square footage, and he actually posted. How many people are allowed in that unit? So that could be another thing that could be used. To get the quantity of people in the unit correct. So I just wanted to throw that out. Appreciate that, and, and we've had discussions with, uh, Patrick, who's replaced Brian. He is the fire marshal for the fire district for Windsor South. Right, it's Patrick, so he's, he's got a lot, a lot of ground to cover and, and. Putting the onus on, on just him to get all that done is tough. Uh, there, there are owners here who took it upon themselves to contact him or Brian and say, hey, can you come help me with this, but I know what the occupancy is. That's, that's an example of responsible property, right? So the hope is that we see more of that by.
Um, Krista?
Hi, um, thank you so much for having this, um, this meeting. My name is Krista Gleason. I've been a short term rental.
Krista? Krista, we're losing your audio, maybe you could turn your video, Krista?
Yeah.
And then you might get.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Sorry, is this better?
That's, I think so.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, hey, um, wonderful, wonderful, sorry, I, I was on Bluetooth. Um, but, uh, thank you so much for having this, um, this meeting for, uh, Town of Dover and, um. Hey, on behalf of the responsible short term rental owners in Dover, I'm speaking to Richard and Suzanne. I apologize that you guys have had these horrible experiences, because me as a short term rental owner, I have had them too, and I'm. Just as angry at the people that have done those things. To you as they, they are to me, because they most likely broke some rules. And I can say since COVID, you know, it was like a free for all, people were lying about their ages, giving fake IDs, you know, I think. I think a lot of us. Uh, responsible. People who are on this calling the locals, and, you know, I think, I don't think there's anybody that disagrees with having, you know, proper fire alarms and safety features for. For.
Krista, I think we, did you have something else you need to say, because we're not hearing you right now?
Or, you know, see, you know, keeping everybody safe and their neighbors. Um, what I can say, I, I have cameras just like I just messaged, so it was documented on our VRBO chat. Did you know, I've had people horribly trash my house, and I've called the cops on them myself. You know what I mean? Uh, it's just, it's one of those things, like, there are certain things that we can control, and you genuinely hope that people are good. And trustworthy and are just gonna enjoy a nice weekend, maybe to ski or with their family or friends. Um, you know, I'm open to definitely like, you know, helping you guys out too, in whatever way you deem fit. I can say though that for the ten years that I've rented my home, I can count on one hand how many. People stand out in my mind. As bad renters that I was asked a couple years, and I think it is a little bit of COVID. You know what I mean? I've never had people over the age of twenty-five act this way. It's usually the younger crowd, a college crowd. Um, you know, they think they're invincible, they just do, they think they own the world, you know, and. And there's only so much you can vet online, unfortunately, but I can say that. You know, I stand behind the camera idea, well, as soon as I put security cameras up, uh, I'd say about six years ago. People were very, very honest, and all of a sudden the house started being left in a lot nicer condition than, uh. Than it was prior, you know, uh, not that the folks were doing bad things or whatnot, but at that point, but. It was, it, it, the, the cameras really do add a deterrent, and so does the rental agreement. A really strong structured rental agreement outlining kind of, you know, expectations, being a good neighbor and. Letting people know that this isn't romper room, I think really is. A good idea, and I just put that out there, I think most responsible rental owners already do that. Um, you know, a couple bad players here and there. Even me as a responsible rental owner, I can say I've had them, and, you know, I wish I didn't. So, you know, I, I think it's gonna always be hard to control those bad people, you know? But I'm willing to listen and, and, and find a happy medium, you know, Suzanne and Richard specifically talking to you about that. Um, one thing I do question, um, with the, uh, fire alarms, is there going to be a, um, oh, yeah?
I'm sorry, but we, we were limiting people to two minutes and you've exceeded that? So if you have something. Sentence, we'll let you go, and then I, I wanna make sure we have time for other people, because we only have five minutes left for public comment.
You got it. So the, the fire regulation, is there gonna be any kind of industrial, um, fire system requirement? I've heard mixed reviews on that, and I've found kind of iffy, iffy, uh, information on, on. Uh, having commercial things installed and requirements for that.
Not at the town level. Okay.
Okay, great.
And I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask everybody to like a minute, I apologize. Should raise your hands.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, um, this will be really fast.
Okay.
Uh, I have to buy again, embarrassing, so doing this again, uh, I believe in responsible renting, I feel like we do everything we can. I live by rules, fine, I have no problem with it being recommended here. I want to thank the committee for the work that they did. I think to our point, uh, without a lodging here in, in town, uh, I just think you're not gonna drive the same amount of tourism. Um, I'm all for all types of lodging, uh, we have fifty coming into, uh, the Grey Ghost Inn in March, we did it last year too. But I think from an SDR perspective, it's how people travel these days, and I think it's also irresponsible. Everyone deserves their piece of, there's their, their right to piece of their, I think we need to do responsibly and, uh. Uh, communications and time, which is like this, we'll drive.
Well, I'm gonna ask everybody who's got their hand up to come up here and stand in line, and then we can get to you all quicker.
One more thing, I submitted something officially to Eric, there was a letter of support that went out, that many people in the community. That, uh, signed, we had three hundred and sixty-four signatures, uh, in favor of a possible.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Erica Chinchin, and myself and my two daughters.
Excuse me, we needed to be quiet while people are talking, please.
Myself and my two daughters own three rental properties up here, and we have not had any problem. Um, but I'm very happy that you have the rental nation, we're happy to abide by them. And I just was thinking that if you had a, what you said, you wanted to have the name. And phone number of a contact inside all of the houses or the units, but if the town had name. Email address and cell phone number of the owners, so the town could contact somebody if there was a noise problem. Or the rental manager, if the owner is not available, and then if that rental manager or owner. Would have to call the property that's making too much noise, and then they'd have to say, you have to quiet down, you know, quiet down, then. The police come, then I'm gonna get a fine, and then when, when I, when I. Make my comments about you as a renter, just like every rental owner gets, you know. Rated and then the renter gets rated, and if you get a bad, couple bad rentals, ratings, then nobody's gonna wanna rent you. Something that was just a possibility, I just thought, and the other only, only other thing is that. I don't think it'd be such a bad thing for everybody who has rental property to have the bare proof garbage. Containers, because it's not fair to have garbage strewn around, anyway.
Jody Keeler, um, giving to the fire marshal, I went to presentation a few months ago, by Patrick, um, State Fire Marshal's office. And he said that he considered, they considered all short term rentals to be public buildings in terms of fire safety. And that they required a certificate of occupancy, and they were particularly interested in those properties that rented to eight. Uh, had over eight sleeping spaces, so. I wanted to see if you could address this requirement for a certificate of occupancy from the fire marshal's office versus a self-certified, um, questionnaire survey.
So Patrick came and, and presented to us on this. Um, it, it was mainly focused on those nine to sixteen, um, spaces, and I think. There was. Such a small number of those types of properties that it wasn't the main point of our conversation was to, to focus on. Uh, the, it was, it was more to focus on the self-certification. And, you know, so we, we didn't have the discussion about nine sixty.
I live in a neighborhood where we have three of them that are over eight, um, and. Somebody I know contacted the fire marshal's office, and the response was that we was instructed by upper management. To only initiate an, an inspection if it was a complaint from somebody who stayed there or a complaint from a local fire chief.
That, that's basically what Patrick was able to say to us as well, is that, again, he's, he's trying to cover everything from Windsor South. And, and I don't know that they have the capacities.
Just a question.
Yes, correct.
Alright, so we're gonna continue with a self-certified, not requiring a certificate of occupancy, which is what clearly is required.
This is not necessary, the recommendations are not cast in stone, so this is where we're starting from. We're looking for public input. Things can change, okay? Thanks.
Hi, Sean Kirby. Uh, thank you for the recommendations, they seem very reasonable. Um, I did have this question, there's been talk of a fee for registration of a short term rental. Uh, if you could give us a sense of what that fee would pay for. Uh, if it goes through, uh, I think that'd be helpful for the audience.
So the fee is literally going to be the cover, to cover the cost of whatever registration company that we use. So if it costs, and, and I, I hate throwing numbers out. If it costs a hundred and fifty dollars for the property to be, to be registered with a company for a year, then the fee would be a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so, right, all of that, what is the registration company doing?
They're the ones who are tracking to make sure that you're registered, to make sure that all of your documents are following the rules and regulations that will be outlined in an ordinance, if that's the route that we decide to go to. Implement said rules. They would be collecting all of this data, they would be managing, uh. You know, again, they, they're looking for occupancies when they're doing their sweeps online to make sure that you're not listing. Your one room apartment as twenty people, they're also dealing with, uh, the, the management of complaints being filed.
And, uh, just to follow up and then I'll, I'll let it go, um. We'll, in that occupancy fee, is there going to be a difference between someone who's renting a two bedroom place that. Max two people and someone who's renting a place like that?
It's not a discussion that we've had, it was a, it was a set fee across the board to have, if you want to use your property as a short term rental, then it would be registered as a short term rental. Okay, so it doesn't matter to the audience.
Good evening, uh, my name is Emilio Piquanelli, I, uh, I own a short term rental company in Dover. I'm Westover, right across from Seven Eleven. Um, I wanna thank you guys and thank whoever for putting this, working on the by time committee. I highly recommend these, these recommendations, they're very reasonable. I manage over four homes, and I've had over eight hundred bookings this year. Where this will help weed out some of the issues, some of the issues these other owners are, are addressing. Uh, some of the other owners recommended some great ideas with their rental agreements. Um, that's how I weed out all my, all my guests, and I haven't had any of these issues, about eight hundred bookings. So with this, and the other, some of the other things they've provided, I think would be very beneficial for everyone.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight and advocating for us, and thank you to everybody that's from Westover and Vermont, that's the locals. Um, we bought here in May of last year, it's been nothing but amazing. Um, unfortunately, we can't work remotely at this time. I, we, we live in New York, we do, do short term rentals. Being paramedic by trade, we stew that the house has the safest regulations, we have a camera, we vent. And look at who's renting the house, um, we're embedded in the community, we reach out to the local fire department, we. Reach out to the local establishments, and I, we will abide by every regulation that we have. I just hope that we're more welcomed in this community, and if there's anything that we can do from the, the locals, because I know we're not considered locals, we're from New York. Just let us know, because this is the place where we want to eventually live and embed ourselves in the community and live in. Unfortunately, with work, we can't do it at this point, but let us know what we can do. But we're abiding by the safest regulations we can, and we'll keep on anything.
Thank you.
Uh, Rafael Pelleja here, I own two short term rentals up by Snowtree condos, um. Been skiing in the area since I was, I was a kid, and, uh, me and my wife, we were buying one three years ago, we've been doing really well. Like, families really love it, we've had over a hundred and twenty families. Um, and not one bad instance at all, everyone's just had a great time, we go really hard to. Make sure we actually become friends with town members, we recommend like deep insights, we let them know the burger at Dover Bar and Grill is the best. You know, stuff like that, and I feel like, I feel like that's, I feel like that's important, like. Really, you know, appreciate the mutual kind of, so.
Thank you, um, I have Adam Pomater on, up on the screen, do you wanna speak really quickly?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great.
Adam, I'm just gonna be rude and say really quickly.
Really fast, so. Went out, because I think everything else has been kinda hashed over, is I, I do think that from a resolution standpoint. From some of the people that are very concerned about neighbors and stuff like that, because I've had the conversation with a lot of clients. Is I think that if small HOAs and like Bear's Crossings is a good example, those buildings are their own HOAs. Spring Hill where Jody lives is a great example, if you want, if they wanna limit rentals as an HOA, they have that ability. And little pockets of non-rented spaces could be great, because some homeowners could say, I wanna live in an area where there aren't rentals allowed. And, you know, homeowners as a group could do that without putting it on the town. So I just think that's one thing that people should think about, rather than putting everything on the town, hey, if I'm in. A development that has an HOA for a building or something, talk to the other homeowners. Maybe you'll find these little pockets where there aren't rentals, and that's what a lot of the cities like New Orleans are doing. There's these little communities where there isn't rentals and it works out better for everybody, so just a thought.
Thank you, thanks, Adam.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Russ, I just live here.
Could you, you sit closer to the microphone so we catch you.
So I live here with a lot of other people, um, we watched what happened in this town over the past few years happen. Um, all these things that you guys are talking. Um all these things that you guys are talking about on this helps nothing. There's nothing in here that helps anything with what's going on in this town right now. There's nowhere for people to live. There's nowhere for people to rent a place. You don't own, if you don't, if you don't wanna, whoever's come up here and bought up everything, there's nowhere for people to get a place. What do you think's gonna cook their food? This is ridiculous. You guys wanted to come up with something, come up with something real. You know, uh a sixty forty per season. You wanna have something, you wanna rent it out short term, fine, you use a sixty percent of each season, forty percent you rent it out. Each season. You know, do a uh incentivize people to rent it out year round, you know, penalize them to rent it out short term, thirty percent's gotta go shake a cobble while you're sleeping. Really don't, couldn't care less, this is ridiculous, I don't care about your minute or your two minutes. Like people have been kicked out of their places, losing their places, they don't know where to go, this is bad. So all this is, this is crap. Sorry, those things suck.
Act like the last boss.
Excuse me, excuse me, no, no.
Hi, can you hear me?
Second guy, the second guy from the end has not spoken yet, no. Jean?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh my name is Jean Francois and so um we have a property in in Westover and I have a quick question about uh garbage collection. Um is there a way the town could recommend, and not only for the uh for the short term rental, but also for everybody like to uh to recommend uh a good way to keep the garbage from uh being attacked by uh by bears and stuff like that, because we don't have a garbage collection where at our house. So and I wonder if it could be part of the recommendations for all the S T Rs.
So if there was a recommendation made or it was part of the ordinance to require the bear proof trash at the rentals, then I I'm sure that on the information page on the website, there could be some recommendations for for said bear proof trash. Um in responding to the previous comments, if I may, we're absolutely working every day to make sure that we get as much housing for our workers as possible. I think I said it earlier, the idea that we take away a short term rental and it automatically becomes a place to live for so, for a local is just not fact. So I appreciate. So what, if if you read.
Sir, sir, we're not gonna.
You cannot speak at this moment. Well, no, we will ask you to leave.
We are having a public meeting and there are rules that we follow in a public meeting and one of them is that one person speaks at a time.
So if you read through the, if you read through the committee report that we put together, it's it's not just the seven things that you threw on the table, it's it's a list of things that we can be doing to incentivize and improve housing stock for long term rentals as well. So take a look at that, I'm happy to have a conversation about it. Our housing group is working every month to do what we can to find workforce housing. We're we're, if 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 there was a magic wand I could wave and make it so that every service person or professional in this valley had a place to live here in Dover, I would absolutely do that. But we haven't had an opportunity to do that and we will continue to work to that.
Can you at least admit that this is the main thing making it hard for everybody?
I can't admit that.
Really?
No.
There's nothing.
Okay, okay.
We can at least admit that.
The short, well, why don't you have that conversation with Eric in his office, he explained, no, because we're trying, we're already way over time. Would you like to speak?
This is really the other time, there's no.
Excuse me, you're gonna have to leave.
You're gonna have to leave the building, please.
I'm not, you know, I'm trying to just keep the.
But there's rules.
Okay, okay, you can talk. Could I have your name?
Oh, Stephanie from Rusty.
Thanks.
Um I own Home for Property Management, I manage seventy plus properties. My recommendation is that for people who register their homes to to be uh rented, that they have to have a property management company locally that can be contacted, because a lot of people are renting on Airbnb and they have a cleaning company or a plumbing guy or a rolling guy, but they don't have a property manager on the ground. So that's my recommendation, is that if you register to rent, you have to register with one many of them, property managers, so that you have a local on the ground to deal with a bear got into the trash, you have a noise complaint. There are twenty one cars in the driveway, there's somebody on the ground and it's not all being put on the police who are already sure it's not on the fire, fire marshal, it's not on the homeowner who's in your home.
Thank you, I'm sorry, unless you have something really like a pressing question or something, we're already way over time and you did already have a chance to speak, so I'm just trying to move us along here.
No problem.
Um sir, did you wanna say something? You haven't had a chance to speak yet. Could I have your name, please?
My name is Christopher. I've been trying to pay seven years ago, I've been coming up here to speak a long time. Bought a home, I'm a go. Uh this year, um we plan to go away in the wintertime. So I plan to rent it now, I hear a lot of things, I'm just to some extent, I feel a gentleman over there. If you have a two family home, a two bedroom home, you can rent that out to to workers, if you have a four, five bedroom home, nobody's gonna rent rent that for this, for the season for workers, unless you, there are a few people who want to live by people who are not family together. My home has four bedrooms, but only, it will only allow six. But now I see that I have to pay the registration fee, see only he wants me to have a move with a property manager, but if I do that, I'm not making any money for me to go on vacation, I'm gonna stay here. And uh and that's that's my point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we've moved to the section of the meeting where we're going to have board comments and questions, so do I have board members who want to say anything?
Well, I'm glad everybody came out tonight, um we I reiterate what Erica said. We are not trying to limit short term rentals. We uh, but I think the conversation that's had, been had tonight, maybe this kind of group should form a group to 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 advocate and to and help raise the the level of um approval or or ed, ex, or change, try to change opinions of of people um that may not be proper opinions actually in the long, but I think there's a lot of value in in this group coming together and and speaking, whether you guys have some Zoom meetings, talked about good strategies, I think a lot of good um information came out of this, um so I think that it's 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 been very productive and we really appreciate every, appreciate everybody's comments and concerns. And uh we understand this, the things have changed very quickly and we wanna make sure that we can still be a viable ski community, year round community that uh can welcome, welcome the people who wanna be here and do it responsibly.
We're sitting here and and as I take in the whole meeting, we are not against doing short term rentals in the town. The whole select board, I think as a whole, knows it's part of our town as a whole, so don't worry about that side of thing. I I was a little surprised as people thought that at this meeting. We have to have somebody's recommendations become something, we can't just think about it. It's come to the point where we have to have some sort of registration program. Um the other towns, you know, I'm just, as I'm sitting up here on my laptop, Killington does something, Stone does something, all these towns are doing something. So it's not like we're doing something that the other towns aren't doing. We're not, we may not do what Wilmington does, we may not do what Killington does, but we have to do something. The big thing is, you know, just listening to this meeting is, everyone should have their property registered, there should be somewhere inside that property where they could contact the owner. It needs to be up to fire safety code. Um I, that's the key thing that I want everyone to know, to make sure you do that, one thing.
Sarah. Um well, did you want me to talk about ordinance versus viral or no?
No.
Okay, so um no, I'm really glad we heard everything, I hope that this also dispelled some misconceptions. I think a lot of people came in here thinking we were looking for a way to ban these. Um and I hope that we were able to dispel that notion, so people are now realizing we're not gonna try to take away your ability to use your home the way you would like, but we are gonna ask you to put guardrails on it for the, for the benefit of the greater community. Um and while this is one conversation, there is also a conversation about long term rental and that is another conversation to have, but they're not necessarily the same class of conversation. Right now, this is the conversation to have. Um and we will continue, there will be opportunities to get more information from people. Um I assume that there's enough demand, we would have another listening if we need to.
Have to discuss it around ourselves, well.
But there's. Oh, okay, so, and did you wanna speak?
And I was gonna call Scott next.
Oh, well, Dan already was unmuted.
Scott, do you wanna say something?
Uh I think we've already kind of addressed a lot of the main points, but also just to to let everyone know that the locals that are, that have had um unfortunate experiences, that we hear you as well. And I think a lot of the recommendations are are um a step in the right direction.
Hi.
Dan. Yep.
Yes, uh regulation is absolutely necessary. Like everybody else, you know, it was something in somebody else's yard. Till a couple of weeks ago where I had someone who moved into a house that they bought and they Wyson played us from Connecticut and I had to make a complaint, which was the first time in twenty two years I lived here, I had a complaint about a neighbor. Uh Justin Maturro lived in uh Josh's house on Lower Highlands. Twice had to put a fire out from Airbnb rentals, Josh lived in Connecticut. Uh Richie Sedlack, I went to visit him to pick up a refrigeration unit, I couldn't get in his driveway, the people were from Massachusetts. So my real issue is the fact that these people are not living in the community and I wonder, without regulation, how we could possibly run the town without having some kind of catastrophe. So I'm all for a registration of some kind.
Thank you, thank you. Um Eric asked the key, yes.
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out, providing your feedback, constructive, your criticisms, um we we need that, right, because that's that's what helps us to guide the decisions and the things that we recommend to our board, so I appreciate you all coming out. That being said, we live in a very small community between the town of Dover, the town of Wilmington and and just beyond. There's a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of misconceptions, okay? Take the time, look through the report, if you have questions on the report, further recommendations. I'm in the town office every day, during the week. Call me, email me, whatever you wanna do, let's have a conversation about it, don't if you have a question, if you hear something that sounds counter to what we've talked about here tonight, reach out to me and I can help to to kind of quell some of those fears, I a lot of the phone calls that I get where people are irate or scared are because either we haven't looked at the information and and actually know what's being discussed, or because they hear something else around town that actually doesn't have any truth to it. So don't hesitate to reach out to me, I'm happy to talk through these topics with you and I hope that we can eventually come to a resolution that works for both sides.
So, um the next step I think is gonna be I think all of us should take it away, the board members, think about it, come and we're gonna need to to get on a um a select board meeting agenda to discuss what we have taken away from this, listening to everybody. And uh that may not be the next meeting, it might be the meeting after, we may have a very full agenda of the next meeting. So it could be later in November. Um but we certainly know that we need to not just sit on this, we need to do something about it and, but I really appreciate some of the other nuances that people have pointed out during this meeting tonight. And we will take them, all these thoughts um away with us and we will, we will be um making a decision on what to put forward as um and voting on, you know, we'll have some more feedback, obviously, but we're gonna eventually probably come up with an ordinance that uh we would vote on and then there's an opportunity, if the ordinance is not a um popular, to have a and a uh petition to recall the ordinance, so um there's a time period where that's that that option is available for the people for for the voters.
So but before we came up with the ordinance, there would be a public meeting.
Oh, yeah.
To discuss it, so this isn't the last conversation. And it, and the conversation would happen with the ordinance in in a draft form.
Yes.
I would ask that they keep an eye on the agendas, because not all of these meetings will be posted to Facebook as this.
Okay, Eric says to keep an eye on the Dover town, town of Dover select board agendas, because this one was posted on Facebook and not all of our meetings are posted on Facebook and that's not to intentionally keep people in the dark, it's just that's, that's the way uh they they operate.
All the meetings are warned on the town of Dover website, they have a very clear link uh for meetings and and things like that, you can find all of the agendas there. Typically, the agenda for a meeting on Tuesday will come out the Friday, be posted the Friday before, so just keep an eye there.
And we always meet the first and third Tuesdays of the month. Of course, we have a meeting next week uh on Tuesday, which is not the first or the third, it's to to discuss our uh ARPA money and how we we wanna try to spend that and we want public input on that as well. Steph, Stephanie, yes.
When could people expect to see these rules or regulations put into place?
Um well, I I would guess it would, the earliest it could be would be early in twenty twenty four.
Okay.
Because with the the period of the the re, you know, the forty five days, I believe it is uh petition period, uh it doesn't really go into effect till that is last or or uh petition has been put forward. Okay?
And I should say something, I'm sorry, no, you said I had my speaking. I just feel a little offended because this is our home. We go to the farmer's market, we go to the flea market, we go to Twice Plus, we're trying to make ourselves embedded in this community and I feel like we're getting pushback and I don't want that. I want it, I want to have a cohesive group, I wish this is our home here. And unfortunately, we can't be here full time and we manage it and we do the strictest regulations, I have, we have cameras in the house, yes, you try to abide by all the fire regulations, we'll do everything, but I wish they would have looked at it, we haven't taken housing away from anybody, the house was on the market.
Can I just say something? There's always gonna be somebody who's not gonna like a decision that the majority agrees with.
No, that's, that's.
Right, and so I I would encourage you to take the sentiment of the evening as a whole, rather than an individual sentiment that may have felt personal, because I'm not sure that it was, I really don't think it was personal to you.
No, I don't.
Right, um but kind of stick, think about the overall tenor of the meeting and take that as the community's reaction.
But I just wish the group would take like our short term rentals, but doing it as a means to maybe just you know, financially gap us when we can't be up here.
I don't think anybody disagree, I don't think anybody disputes that or disagrees with it.
No.
I don't think anybody's saying that you're not telling the whole truth about how you're doing this.
No.
And we're happy that you wanna be a part of the community, we're happy that you wanna come and shop at Twice Lasting, go out for pizza.
Oh, yeah.
We like that, that's good, go to the sawmill for brunch.
We want to do. Thank you to everybody that's here.
And thank you, thank you everybody for coming, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty eight P M, thank you, appreciate it.